Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. And this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call it to order. I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, council members Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, John Darling are here and participating remotely. And council member Kate McAllister is present here with us in chambers. Councilman Andy Grove is absent. Seating. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into your republic, which sustains one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of announcements tonight. I'll start with Amanda. There's been lots of community questions about fall leaf pickup because of our warmer weather that we've had late this year. And so our leaves are falling later.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening. We just wanted to provide an update that today we completed leaf pickup. The crews will continue going through town and spot checking for any areas where we may have additional leaves in the gutters, specifically the catch basins and get those addressed. And we will continue sweeping as long as weather permits and we're not moving into snow plowing. So just wanted to provide everyone that update and thank citizens for all their hard work in getting the leaves out and for being patient while we worked our way through town multiple times this year as a result of the long leaf falling event.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that.
Our second announcement tonight, our update, Mr. Mayor, is from Sarah Lynn, our city treasurer, about our local option tax.
Good evening. I wanted to give you a quick update on the 1% lot tax that will be expiring at the end of the month, so December 31st. It will be ending. We have collected a little over $6,750,000. And we also are going to be sending out a letter this week to the businesses to get, basically, update them with what we have collected. And then also to remind them to update their financial or their software, accounting software to end that tax as of the end of the month. So any questions, let me know. Other than that, it is expiring, like I said, at the end of the month.
Say that number again, how much?
$6,750,000.
That's incredible. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other announcements from staff? Okay. The Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency will be seeking another, another person to fill a seat that's been vacated by Jacob Humble, who has alerted me that he is looking to move on. We thank him for his service. He served in that role for the last two years on the Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency Board. So again, thank you, Jacob Humble, for your service. And I would just let the public know that we will be accepting applications for that board seat. So please, you can either go online on our website, sandpointidaho.gov, or you can stop in to City Hall to request an application in person. Any announcements from council? Yes, Councilwoman Rule?
Yes, I would just like to share this evening with everyone that as of our last council meeting 14 days ago, as I had stated when I spoke, there were 90 deaths in the Panhandle Health District. As of 6:00 AM this morning in the Panhandle Health District, there have been 116 deaths. And when I checked at 5:00 PM today, the number had changed to 122 deaths. More than two people have died every day since our last meeting 14 days ago. That is 32 total people we have lost. Six of those people died today. So as part of what I would like to do for this town to show some leadership, I would like to direct staff to come up with either an ordinance or some other form where we make it required for businesses within the Sandpoint City limits to post that mask wearing is mandatory somewhere on the front of their business, either a door and such. And I plan to work on staff, work with staff on the wording of that this week. And then I would like to ask the mayor again that we take one moment of silence for all 32 of these individuals. Not each, not meaning 32 minutes, but a moment of silence for these people that have died since our last meeting 14 days ago. Thank you.
Dearly noted, counselor. Clerk, can we have 30 seconds of silence to recognize those that have passed due to COVID in these last two weeks?
30 seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public an opportunity to address the mayor and city council regarding items listed on the consent calendar and any topic not listed on the agenda. Is anyone signed up to speak in the public forum portion?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak during public forums, please raise your hand. And I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of our meeting. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $75,352 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
I'm opposed.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would like to take a moment to thank Mo Dunkle for his continued service to our community. As a member of the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, I ask for the council's confirmation of his reappointment in the, through the consent calendar approval. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Dunkle. Appreciate your service. This will be your call.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Espiro?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Motion passes. The first item under Old Business is a COVID-19 update from City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton and Police Chief Cory Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm primarily going to hand it over to Chief Kuhn to provide an update on education and outreach regarding the mask mandate. As we previously indicated in releases and announcements to the public, our approach around the Panhandle Health District mask mandate has primarily been one, again, of education initially for these first 30 days. And then we can reassess. We are, in some cases, maybe issuing warnings. And we are tracking our data through police in terms of calls and warnings issued and things like that. So we will have that data moving forward. Also wanted to, again, cover our protocol that we have had for our council meetings, for our commission and committee meetings and other meetings that we have here in City Hall. We have set up our council chambers, moved down from the dais to the current configuration to allow for social distancing. So for members of the public who are participating electronically, may not be able to, are not here in person. We're limited, obviously, with the governor's order to group size of no more than 10. So we are reaching out to our commission members, to our council members, determining who wants to attend in person, who's participating electronically, and then are able to assess staff in-person participation as well as presenter participation. For those that may be wondering, when presenting, we generally are not wearing masks for the purpose of you being able to hear us participating electronically. With the social distancing, we are still in compliance with the Panhandle Health District order with the six feet of social distancing without the mask. So in case anyone's online and wondering about that. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Chief Kuhn. You get the update this time.
Thank you. I know that in speaking with the mayor in the last couple of weeks about the approach the police department have and a plan that we would put in place to help educate the public on the new mandates by Panhandle Health District with a review in 30 days. Kind of is not quite a halfway point, but time to come back in and at least explain to the mayor and the council some of the things that we, in the police department, have done and some of the things that we, we have seen over the last couple of weeks. From the educational approach that we've done, is it's really, I won't say it's been reactive, but it's been kind of a reactive and a proactive approach from the police department. We've been out, we've visited with some of our businesses, we've pushed stuff out to our Facebook accounts, we've pushed it out to the Daily B. We've been on the radio with kind of the expectations that we have right now, trying to educate. I've found over the last couple of weeks, there's a lot of people that, as everybody knows here, gets their information in a variety of ways. Those that are on Facebook usually don't get the Daily B. Those that read the Daily B don't get Facebook. And hopefully with the radio and some of those, we'll get a broader group of those people, at least locally, that are coming in and out on what's going on. And walking around town this week and talking to some of the businesses, one of the areas that we don't have a lot of educational information up. We did a really good job when COVID first came out with the big blue signs that talk about it. Since the mandate, there's not a, a uniform sign, I think, across town. I walk around, talk to some of the businesses and just being in town, there's a variety of signs from recommended to mandated to, to nothing. So I think that's an area that we could look at, trying to assist the businesses in some of our downtown, some of that educational pieces of that same, that same message. Walking out the businesses, overall, the businesses are fairly happy, I think, for the most part of what's, what's happening. They're, they're stuck in a, in between a rock and a hard place with some of this stuff too, in, in trying to enforce it. The goal is for the police departments to make sure that our businesses know that we're there and that we support them and that we'll, we'll help them out. Walking around the last couple of days, looking, so Panhandle Health District encouraged everybody to look at that mandate and really study it. So I spent the last few days really reading and trying to interpret into how it fits into the law and finding, not a law person, not finding the grays, but trying to see how it applies to the average person, you know? So you look at like downtown today, you know, you got groups of people that I saw without masks that looked like a family unit, walking around, staying together, not mixing. People, I think, for the most part was doing a pretty good job of, of social distancing. I've seen several groups with masks and wearing, I saw, I would say probably all the, the businesses that I went into, all the employees are, were wearing masks and participating. So I think overall, in, in the downtown core that I was in, they're doing a fairly good job of trying to adhere to that spirit of the law with the mask. We've received the police department more, more questions than I could probably count right now. Either, the great thing about nowadays, we get not only the phone calls that come in, but I'm getting emails, I'm getting Facebook, I get text messages with, with questions on, on the mandate, how it applies, how we're interpreting it, what's going to happen after the 30 days is up, some of those things. So there's, there's been a lot of good conversations, I think, from, from not only local residents, but county residents and probably some that are coming in. So I think there's still a couple of things that we could do with that, that marketing of that same message that's going out to encourage those that are coming in to do it. But that's kind of where we're, we're at. And I know that I'm sure some has questions, or the mayor may have some questions, so I'll answer any questions that I can. Okay?
With that, thank you. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions? I know Jennifer and the chief met with the downtown business, not the DSBA, because the downtown retailers group, was that?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, sorry. Okay, I gotta head it.
No, I failed to mention that. We are meeting with them tomorrow to, to discuss some of the things that we could do to help out too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I do want to acknowledge what, what Councilor Rule brought up. And, you know, I really appreciate what she shared at the last meeting. And then here again today, she reminds us of the impact of COVID-19 as it continues to grow in our community. And I want to give an opportunity to the rest of the council to weigh in here if they feel either alignment with Councilor Rule or, or if they feel that there's additional measures or action that the city should take at this time. I want to invite, invite you to speak up now and let us know where you're at so that we could come forward with potential action items in the future if you feel that, that that would be necessary. Or give staff for the direction in terms of how we can improve our education and outreach.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
It sounds like, you know, Cory and a number of departments are still in the initial phases of collecting data on the response to the mandate from the Panhandle Health District. And it would be, speaking for myself, extremely beneficial. Yeah, I'll update on that perhaps at the next meeting, if not beforehand, if that information is available, to get a better grasp on what our businesses are struggling with, if they are in need of supplies in terms of masks. If they're in need, Cory mentioned, you know, there's not universal signage yet in terms of the mandate. It's, it's not quite clear to me at this time what the businesses are in need of or the public in general. It would be great to better understand, you know, if, if the police is having to issue warnings. I haven't heard anything yet regarding numbers from that perspective. So I think all that information would be super helpful to me, perhaps the rest of the council in terms of making any additional recommendations to staff. I don't have any time. I'd love to see some more information coming to us in terms of what our community's needs are.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Yeah. Counselor Darling?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to point out, I think that each business owner, they have the opportunity to put whatever, what image in their stores at this point and always will have that right to be able to ask their customers to abide by their conditions. So I don't believe any kind of ordinance issued by the city would be relevant to ask them to put a sign in their window. So that's just my opinion.
Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Like the chief, I've been out visiting businesses the last several days and most of them do have signs that say masks required or masks highly encouraged. They won't do any enforcement because they're afraid. The good news is, is that they're, economically, they're doing great. Most of them have said this is the best November they've ever had. This last weekend was great. And they really haven't had very many surly customers. You know, they're just trying to hold on through the end of the year because if some of them employees have had to be quarantined, I was told today by several of them, if they have to shut down for a 10-day period, then they're going to go out of business. So I think it's, we're kind of in a tough spot, riding the blade of the sword. But for the most part, they're doing well. Businesses are doing well economically. I really keep in touch with all of them quite often. Joel, I can never seem to get around to you because your window's too busy. So, but anyway, so they're, they're doing well. They're all, they all have a positive attitude and just hoping to get through the holidays.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Joel.
Okay. It's a little choppy on my end.
Yeah.
Even when John and Shannon were speaking, it was like... We good or no? I'm still hearing some chop on mine, some chopping.
Counselor, go ahead.
Mr. Kuhn, so how do you deal with people with medical conditions? Do you have to, do you have to ask them or if they have a medical condition before you approach them or how do you deal with that? Out of curiosity, I know some people, they get high anxiety, so I guess looking, looking for your advice there.
No, absolutely. So if, if we, so what, that's one of the questions we've had. So most, most people that have been educated understand that if they have a medical, mental health or some type of disability, it doesn't require them to wear a mask. They're quick to point that out, which, as you know, if you've read that mandate from the health department, then that ends the conversation really when it comes to the mask. So in that conversation, if there's a complaint that somebody's filed that Chief Kuhn doesn't wear his mask and when an enforcement officer approaches him and there's a conversation and the, the individual, for me, if I was to say I have a, a condition that doesn't require me to wear it, the conversation really stops at that point. We're not allowed to go beyond that scope.
Lowering my mic, one sec. Is that better? Is that better?
That's a little bit better. You're fairly loud.
Oh, I'm very sorry about that. Is that okay or you want it lower?
Lower, lower's great.
It might reduce the background that you're getting.
Okay, what, what about that?
That's good. That's even better.
Okay. I can just go completely, no. Okay, yeah, so we have, for example, a young man that helps us out who has some challenges and so he cannot wear one and people, you know? So yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
No, one of the things that we've encouraged people in talking to them is to understand that everybody has their own challenges going on with their own personal lives and not to jump to one side or the other because we see that on both sides. So it's important that the, the general public is patient, one with another as they, they go about doing their, their shopping, their, their eating, their dining, some of those things. So I appreciate that comment because that is one of the things that we, we shouldn't jump to conclusions on. Just because somebody's not wearing a mask doesn't mean they don't want to be noncompliant. There might be other reasons there. Appreciate that, chief. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Is there anyone in the public on Zoom that would like to participate, that would like to comment on this issue quick?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that update and appreciate that conversation, counsel. The next item under Old Business is a proposed resolution approving the University Park subdivision development agreement. Infrastructure and Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson and City Consultant Phil Cushland will provide information regarding the signing. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7B is a proposed resolution regarding the preliminary plat application for a 152-lot subdivision, University Park, as approved by City Council following the public hearing on November 4th. The approval of that preliminary plat included a direction to staff to negotiate final conditions with the developer and return to City Council with a final development agreement. And so to that end, we have our consultant, Phil Cushland, online here with us remotely. And he has been the lead on that development agreement, so I'm going to pass it off to Phil. Good evening, Phil. I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. What you have before you is a document that is pretty much as you saw the last time when you discussed the issue. You did give us direction to make changes to it. And so we're returning to you with those changes as you directed. They were basically four. One was to extend the timeline to 2025 for any extensions to allow that five-year period for completion of the subdivision. You requested us to defer the requirement for a right turn lane at Evans Lane until there was increased density or rezoning submitted for Phase 4, which is the area down at the southern part of the subdivision. You directed us to provide for greater flexibility on the design of the fence running on Boyer Avenue and, and Northview. And then finally, there was the issue of who's responsible for snow removal. And so those, right after the last meeting, we drafted some modifications to the language and shared it with staff and with the, the developer, development team. And basically, there's been agreement as far as we understand that the, the changes that we made back and forth through a couple of iterations were sufficient to reach agreement with the development team. So it's my understanding that based upon your direction, the modifications that have been made and the agreement of the developer, that the document is ready for your consideration at this time. Not to belabor the point, if you'd like to ask questions, we'll be happy to answer. But that's basically what you told us to do and that's what we did.
Thank you, Mr. Cushland. Appreciate that. Does counsel have any questions? Okay, that's very clear. All right, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Grim is on the line.
Okay, Mr. Grim, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Beautiful. Thank you, mayor and counsel and staff and Phil for putting this together. We look forward to proceeding with this. Just a couple of elements I want to note on this. The first has to do with Condition N, 12N. If Amanda can just scroll down a little bit there. And not that I'm asking you to change this at this point in time, but if you look at that condition, it says the developer shall adequately maintain all stormwater conveyance and treatment systems in accordance with the stormwater permit issued by the city in perpetuity and transfer such maintenance to future individual property owners and/or other entities by blah, blah, blah. The concern here, and just more of a clarification that I want to put into the record is that, you know, once the stormwater enters the right-of-way, it goes into, you know, stormwater pipes that are in the street. And, and we just assume that you're not asking, you know, the, the future homeowners to maintain and own and potentially replace the stormwater pipes in the street. I don't think that's the intent. Just wanted to clarify that. And the only other thing is, you know, we weren't able to get to a, a place where we could agree upon bonding based on legal counsel and concerns that we never quite understood. We, we understand there may be some flexibility in the current city code to allow bonding if some portion of a, a phase is not ultimately completed. But as it stands and our understanding right now, it'll be pretty difficult to pave or build any homes in the subdivision until it's warm enough to pave the street. So we're just hopeful that there's some consideration and flexibility as we get along with the installation of the infrastructure that there, if there's something minor like pavement, that there could be consideration given to bonding for minor components.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Appreciate those, those comments and questions. Mr. Cushland, could you respond to those? The first one was 12N and that, that was with regards to stormwater conveyance and treatment systems. And do you want to go ahead and respond to that one first?
Well, certainly, I think the development agreement deals with, other than where it's specified otherwise, it deals with onsite improvement. So I think what this issue is, is the system that's installed to collect and deal with stormwater on the site is going to be the responsibility of the developer and/or the subsequent owners and/or HOA. So there's no suggestion here that that obligation extends beyond the, the limits of the subdivision other than what any citizen would have to bear as part of the overall system obligations. With regard to the issue of bonding for minor issues, they did express an interest in having some language in there that talked about discretion. The discretion, based upon my conversations with legal counsel, currently exists in, in city code. And so if a situation were to develop where there were some minor issues that were outstanding, that were de minimis, then certainly the city engineer has the... Then certainly the city engineer has the, uh, current, uh, discretion to respond to that and accept, uh, uh, bonding in lieu of. Of, um, actual installation of of improvements. So, uh, again, I think we've, uh, steadfastly indicated that. Generally, uh, the, um, billing permits cannot be issued, uh, before there is a lot on which, um, the the permit can be, uh, provided. And so if there's some minor issues that remain outstanding landscaping and so forth, I think, uh, history has suggested that, um. That discretion has been exercised and can be in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Cushland. Appreciate that. Uh, Amanda, is there anything that you wanted to add to that, or was that?
No, Mr. Cushland summarized it very well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, comments or questions from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for University Park subdivision development agreement. Is there a motion?
Almost.
It's been moved. Is it? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Spurrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that? Was that council rule?
I think that might have been echoing.
Your echo. Okay. Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Spurrow. I see a melting, yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Motion passes. The final item under old business is a multimodal transportation master plan update for Infrastructure and Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson. And Mandy Roberts from OTAC. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna get my screen up here. Over. Maybe. There we go. Right. Well, good evening again. Um. So this evening, uh, we are planning to, or intend to provide a, uh. Overview of our, um, current multimodal transportation plan. The last update that we provided to City Council was back in March. As you'll, um, everyone certainly is aware, um, a lot has happened in our community since March, and, um, this plan has continued to progress through that process. And so. We have our consultant, Mandy Roberts, who is the project manager with OTAC, leading us through this planning effort. She is here remotely with us online and will, um, be sharing this presentation together. I will say that, uh, we intend to provide an overview, as I mentioned at the beginning. We're happy to take questions and kind of take a deeper dive. Um, there is no action this evening. This is an update only. We will, um, at the end of this presentation, kind of go over the timelines and the next steps as to when we will be coming back to council with the. An actual draft and then a subsequent request for action. So. We'll go ahead and get started. And please feel free to interrupt, of course, um, with any questions along the way. Mandy, I will turn it over to you. And I'm happy to drive the slideshow.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council members. It's, uh, great to be able to give you this update again. The last time. We updated you was in March. So we have been working very steadily on the plan and we've accomplished a lot since then. So we want to. Review that with you tonight, talk about what what we've been working on, uh, the work that is still underway. As well as some concepts and solutions that are in development. We want to share those with you and. As Amanda said, kind of take a deeper dive and answering your questions and explaining those. Uh, and then we'll talk about, um, our next steps ahead in the process will be. Going through some community engagement to get input on, uh, highlights of the preliminary draft, um, multimodal plan. So we want to talk those over with you, get your input on those. And then finally, we'll talk about our timeline for completing the plan. Next slide. Great. Okay, so, um, this slide reflects work that, uh, was primarily done late last year. Moving into early twenty twenty. And, uh, as you'll recall, we had assembled an agency coordinating team. As well as a community steering team. And we have continued to meet with those teams at key milestones. Our meetings, uh, since March have been, um, primarily online. And, uh, we have had participation, but perhaps not as much as we had earlier in the process. So. I would say that, you know, COVID has created some challenges with regard to that, but. But we have continued to, um, try to get input in other ways, and I'll, uh, mention those in a minute. Uh, we did have the public survey. We had a tr- a great response to that late last year. That's been a very, uh, important, uh. Kind of, uh, framework for us in terms of thinking about where the issues are and what we need to address with this plan. And, uh, we've done our own analysis of existing conditions and mapping. We had a workshop that's really looking forward and thinking about how. Trends in transportation might change in the future and how this plan should react to that. Uh, we've also worked on the vision, goals and objectives for the plan. We've had a a few drafts of those go through review, so those are in good shape. Early in the year, we had a meeting with Trucking Coalition Group and really redefine the trucking routes for the city. And through that process, I think what we what we found is the importance of the Baldi Mountain connection, and we'll talk more about that in a minute, but. Just as an important way for, uh, to provide connectivity for freight. Um, north of town and to relieve some of the congestion on division, which really seeks to be a complete street that serves a lot of different needs. Uh, multimodal needs. In February, um, right before, uh, things really shut down, we had, um. A great, uh, series of engagement events, uh, where we had pop-up, uh, meeting areas and gathered input. We went to the schools and met with youth groups. We met with a group up up at Schweitzer. And so we got some really diverse input at that time. The map on the right-hand side represents some of the input that we got from the youth groups, uh, summarized. So you can see that they identified some of their hotspots as far as issues that they face, um, as youth navigating throughout the town. So that was really helpful to us. Uh, in June, we did, um, June, you'll recall, was kind of a period of time when the, um, virus was, um. At at lower transmission rates than it is now. And so we were able to have some in-person workshop activities with proper social distancing and mask-wearing. To really assess the pedestrian priority network network in Sandpoint. We'll show you, uh, the outcome of that in a in a few minutes as well. Um, we have, as we have, uh, continued to work on the plan, there have been areas of. Additional data and analysis that we really needed to complete to have a data-driven. Plan that we can make decisions, you know, smart decisions on. So we did, uh, add on an origins and destinations analysis. Which our subconsultant, Ferran Pierce, uh, completed. And that was really looking at, um, where people are going to and from as they travel. Through Sandpoint, um, two points, north, south, and, um, you know, east and west, basically. Next slide. Uh, we also, um, felt like it that it was important to do some updated analysis of some of the key intersections. Some of the data that we were seeing. Was either perhaps outdated or not as complete as we were hoping. And so with the help of city staff helping to do some counts at key intersections, we did some updates in our analysis that has have helped to inform. Some of the project recommendations that are formulating as part of the plan. Um, the di- Division Avenue Safety Audit was completed, uh, earlier this fall, and that was a separate project, but we are incorporating. The recommendations from that audit into the plan, and we'll show you cross-sections for that in a moment. And so basically, we have assembled a preliminary list of project recommendations. We've reviewed that with staff. We have also presented it to the agency coordinating team and the, um, community steering team for input. And, uh, we continue to, um, refine that, and it ultimately will. Go through the public review process and it will be included in the draft plan that comes before you. Um, we also had a workshop with staff in late September where we talked about a strategy for project prioritization. That the city can use on a, on an ongoing basis to prioritize capital, um, improvement projects related to transportation. Um, and then more recently, we've been working on some project concept plans and diagrams, which we'll show you in a minute. That have helped to better define the, um, breadth and scope of improvements needed at some of the key locations in, uh, Sandpoint. And we've had multiple meetings with ITD to also share these concepts and ideas with them. Um, in particular, re- related to the Highway Two corridor and areas that they have jurisdiction over. Um, so that's been important as part of a process. Next. So currently, uh, next slide. Our work underway is related to, um, refining our recommendations list and concepts. We're developing recommended standards for streets, cross-section standards. Um, we will have ongoing coordination with ITD on analysis to support some of the concepts that we're looking at. And then we'll be com- formally compiling and developing the draft multimodal transportation master plan. And that will, um, involve basically organizing all of the information that. All of the data and information and analysis that we've completed to date. Into a plan format as well as integrating relevant content from past plans, such as the urban area transportation plan. Um, so essentially, the multimodal transportation master plan, as we've discussed in the past, will replace. The previous urban area transportation plan. So we will be pulling out and updating content from that plan to include in this one. And then, um, we are working to develop some presentation, presentation packages. Of the draft plan highlights for online community engagement, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. What we're hoping to, um, how we're hoping to, uh, have engagement safely, um, in the next few weeks. So I think that might be my last slide. And turning it back to Amanda for the concepts.
Thank you, Mandy. I really appreciate that overview. Um, and I I do just want to take a a moment to, um, thank our consultants. We in. Initiated this contract with them, uh, exactly a year ago. And, um, had a a very aggressive schedule, um, initially in that contract. As you can tell, they have, um. Performed a lot of work and the scope has continued to, um. I don't want to say creep because it hasn't expanded as far as what the overall goal has been. But what has happened that I really appreciate, um, in their efforts and and is relevant to us getting into the weeds of these concepts is. As we came up with concepts that were, you know, primarily driven by all of the feedback and the data that has been generated. They proof their concepts through the way. So, um, it it's a collaborative team, um, our consultants, um, have put together, and. When we start drafting a plan, there's been times where they call us and say, hey, can you guys go out there and and do some actual, um, counts for us? And so we've sent staff out and not with. You know, our digital fancy data collectors, but just actually had people standing there counting cars for hours. To validate, you know, hey, is this concept really what our models are saying? And so again, I just really want to compliment them because I think they've done a great job of trying to come up with concepts that. Albeit sometimes when we first see them or not, it, you know, maybe, uh, the favorite of all of the the staff and reviewers that are looking at it. But as, as Chief will trickle, we have really had some great workshops and trying to come up with what do what is really the best solution for this location and how is that impacting the overall integration? And interrelation that transportation has in our community. And so, um, I'm going to go ahead and and go through the concepts with you. Um, and as Mandy mentioned, we do intend to get this out to the public and get the concepts out. Other than the community members, you are the first this evening to be seeing them besides staff, and so we're really excited to show them to you. The very first one, we wanted to, um, and I realize you can't read it. That is is clear. This is just letting you know from a conceptual perspective that. We've spent a lot of time defining a sidewalk priority network. As you'll recall, when City Council, um, adopted the revised sidewalk code, we made a commitment to having a sidewalk priority map. And plan for how we were going to achieve connectivity for pedestrians, um, in in a variety of, um. Applications throughout town, you know, what would be our priority here in our strategy for for executing that code? Um, and so this is essentially what it looks like, um, when it actually goes live to the public. You'll be able to zoom in and kind of play with it and make sure that, um, you know, you. You think that it is adequate and we've captured the right routes. Um, a lot of this feedback. Um, or or a lot of the feedback that resulted in the, uh, map that you have in front of you is, um, you know, considering things like bus, um, locations, schools, the, um. Uh, libraries, senior centers, the different services that the community uses, um, feedback from people saying, hey, you know what? I don't really use Lake Street. I use Superior and, um, you know, not taking one voice on that, but what's the collective really kind of looking at here? And so. I I just wanted to give you a glimpse that this is one of the key components of this plan, and it truly has been a multimodal planning effort. Um, I will also say, um, I the, uh, we don't have a a slide specific for it, but SPOT has been an exceptional partner in this effort as well. And, um, uh, their intent is, once we finalize this and say, yes, this is our adopted plan, they're going to take another look at their. Bus stop routes and see if it can better be refined and do any of them need to be moved to help adjust better to the data that we've collected through this effort. So. That's been a really integrated, uh, process. And I'm going to pause there before I go to the next concept to see if anybody has questions on the. Either process overall to date or the, um, high-level sidewalk map in front of you.
Counsel? No, it looks like we're all good.
Okay, now I'll keep plugging away. So the next concept, I have to say, is one of, um, well, I'm really excited about all of them, and I love to talk about transportation, as Mandy does as well, but. We call this one the Baldi Mountain Road, um, connection to Highway Two and Fifth Avenue. I probably could use some better branding on the name. But, um, this is not a new concept. In fact, this actually was first initiated, um, back in about two thousand and six, if not prior to that. And I know many of you, um, have been in this community longer than I and and may remember this. But basically, when you, uh, the University of Idaho was looking to potentially put in a campus, um, at at the location of their, the property north of the tracks there. They did a very extensive traffic study, and they looked at, I believe it was approximately sixteen different options for how would traffic flow if we put a campus here? And the preferred alternative, um, that works in today's situation based upon today's analysis. Is one of the sixteen solutions that they had come up with in two thousand and six. It is, um, kind of held true, um, to be the the preferred alternative. So really, what's the purpose of this connection and what are we talking about? And we have another drawing here I'm going to show you, but I wanted to look at this one first because it's a little bit easier to talk at the ten-thousand-foot view. So this is extending Baldi Mountain Road. Just south of the BNSF tracks. It basically in between the BNSF tracks and the UP tracks, um, to the east and connecting it directly into, um. US two. What's interesting in this image is the byway wasn't constructed yet. So, um, it's kind of, um, I think a fun image to look at. Anyhow, that would be essentially a connection that requires, um, a, uh, a bridge. So the Union Pacific Railroad. The road would go under the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. Um, and I'll show you that here in the next slide. So think of it kind of like a tunnel. So the road grade actually lowers and goes underneath the UP tracks because that section is a lot higher than Highway Two. Kind of near the visitor center, right? That's lower than the grade that's up above it to the west. So, um, what you're seeing here, I realize this is, um, kind of a techie drawing, um, and it is, uh, Boyer Avenue here on the left-hand side, if you can see my cursor. And then basically Baldi Mountain Road would continue with a slight curve into it. This is the structure I was referring to. It's it's a bridge that the road would go underneath. And that right here is the Union Pacific Railroad. Um, the Burlington Northern or BNSF Railroad is running east and west, um, at this location, and UP is running north and south. So it goes underneath the UP and it. So it goes underneath the UP and it connects here into Highway Two. What's interesting is the Idaho Transportation Department has a shovel-ready project that is slated for 2026, or 2026, to actually lower the grade or lower the elevation of Highway Two going underneath the tracks. So kind of there by the visitor center and approaching under the tracks to get that vertical clearance for the larger loads on Highway Two. So what happens to work out pretty slick in this case is the tie-in point works really well with this preliminary design concept. So I say, and we started with this project in the presentation for a reason, because this was the number-one project as we were working through things that kept rising to the top, particularly with the trucking group. And so the trucking group consisted of a lot of our industrial, not a lot, actually all, of our industrial users along Baldi Mountain Road there to the west and then some of them along Great Northern to the, to the north. As well as our police chief, Chief Kuhn, has been involved in this quite a bit as well. And they're really out on the streets a lot. And so getting everyone's feedback in that single room and feedback from the community, this just kept rising to the top as a necessary connection to eliminate a lot of the industrial traffic that is using Division right now and is using Boyer Avenue and getting into some of the areas where we prefer them to be a little bit more residential and address some of the, I would say, conflicts that exist when we have trucks mixed in with some of our other multimodal uses. It gives them direct access to the byway that, as I said, wasn't actually shown here. It helps facilitate that connection that is here where my cursor is right now. So I could talk about this solution a really long time. So I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions before we move on to the other advantage, the other key advantage to this solution. Are there any questions? I'm so glad nobody asked how we're paying for it because that part was not included in this presentation. Really, we have to dial in the solutions and then we can start working on the estimated costs. So we're not prepared to talk about that tonight. But our trucking group, they've already started thinking about it. So I really appreciate all of their feedback on it. And I will say, ITD was beyond excited about this solution and said that this is what our highway is for and we would absolutely write you any letter of support you would like to get grants for this and other funding mechanisms and support us in that. I do want to point out that, as you may recall from our recent discussion on the proposed development just north of this, the University Park, and some of our other developments in town, we are finding that due to traffic volumes, to ensure we have an adequate level of service, we are anticipating and planning for a traffic signal at Baldi and Boyer. To that end, we anticipate in this concept that there would need to be a traffic signal on US Two where this connects into, where Baldi would connect into US Two. One concept kind of conversation we've had around that is we could achieve that without having to stop northbound traffic. And you do it in a kind of a creative way where northbound keeps moving and you can still have a signal that allows Baldi Mountain to exit the highway. So, or exit the, enter the highway, jeepers. And the only traffic that would be stopping is southbound and it would be only when necessary. So it could also include a free right, which basically means you, you know, the signal would allow you to head southbound if that was your choice without too much holding. So. Yes, Councilwoman Rule?
I'm just curious if and when that were ever to happen with that, then reflect back upon the Larch and Highway Two signal to where that might become a signalless intersection?
No, we do not anticipate that, but you ask a really great question. So one of our slides this evening is the Highway Two corridor itself. And really, once we go through these concepts, the next step that we're working with ITD on is looking at US Two from where it connects with the byway all the way down and through to Division and US Two. And in looking at every single signal and having an analysis done, it's called a simulation, where we're looking at how that overall flow functions and what we still need and don't need. I will say that that intersection that you specifically mentioned at Larch, we already anticipate that we are going to have to make some improvements there to provide some additional width and dedicated turn lanes. So I do not anticipate that we're going to see any elimination of a signal at that location, even with this solution in place, albeit we can always continue to reevaluate and we will. We'll continue to update our operational analysis to make sure that our solutions continue to be viable as growth continues and actual traffic occurs. But I think that location is going to be a signal at Larch for quite some time.
Another question. Is this going to impact the visitor center?
No. No, nor is the lowering project.
Okay.
Except for maybe that water line, maybe we could get that replaced.
Yeah, maybe that'd be good.
Yeah, that'd be good. Sorry, sidebar. Any other questions with folks on Zoom? Okay, I can't see everybody, so we're good. So the punchline is what this also does, one of the best things about this that's super exciting, is we have had a lot of conversations. And as Chief Kuhn will tell you, we have spent hours walking up and down Division through a road safety audit and looking at what are the issues on Division? Most, well, everybody on, in this meeting certainly understands the issues. But our consultant team also came and spent a lot of time thinking through this. And in the past, we have often tried to mix all of our uses together. So we have said, we want trucks here, we want pedestrians, we want bicyclists. How can we make this road great for everybody? And what we're finding is making a road great for everybody doesn't always work that well. So on Division, the road safety audit has been completed, as Mandy mentioned. The results of that will be presented to council here in short order. But the result of it and the recommendation is fundamentally, we, we need to get, I don't want to say rid of, but we need to reduce the truck traffic on Division. Division, as everyone is aware, has multiple schools and libraries and senior centers. And it is truly a pedestrian and bicycle corridor. We see kids on bicycles riding the wrong direction in the road. We've had snowplow issues, as everyone is well aware, maintaining the pathways, the sidewalk on the east side. It really, the issues just go on and on and on. And so what this concept does, that the trucking industry really appreciated, was yes, please get us off of Division. So getting trucks off of Division enables us to do what we, I think, all want to do on Division, including the trucks, which is to make this safer for pedestrians and especially kids. And by doing that, where we have two different cross-sections, I'm going to show you. The first one here is, is non-intersection cross-section. What that means is the, the road will primarily look like this. We have another concept here of what it'll look like at an intersection because it is a little bit different. So this is their recommendation. On the west side, we would have a 12-foot-wide path. That is a multi-use path. The current width of the pathway is six feet. So we're nearly doubling the path on that west side. What that 12-foot width does, the minimum is actually 10 feet. But 12 feet really makes us feel comfortable in having bicyclists and pedestrians share it in both directions. In addition, we really need a, we need a buffer zone. We need a buffer zone between the pedestrians and the bicycles, the kids using those access points, for not only safety reasons, but also to enable us a place to put the snow. Right now, that pathway is right up against the curb. And so it's a constant battle of where is the, where's the snow versus where's the kids? Then we need to have adequate lane widths. So this concept would eliminate, for most of the road, the turn pocket that's down the center. We have a lot of width right now on Division and we're primarily using it for a road rather than for the pedestrians and bicyclists. So this basically, for most of the road, except for at key intersections, moves that curb in towards the center on both sides, east and west. It provides a slightly smaller buffer zone on the east side and a six-foot-wide sidewalk. We have sections on the east side that are only three and a half to four feet wide with lots of obstructions. What was interesting is we were walking and we walked it multiple times throughout the day. So really early in the morning when the kids are going to school, we walked it. In the afternoon, when they're getting out, we walked it at night. And the trash cans, something so simple as trash cans on the east side, you're walking along and kids have to go outside, you know, onto the street to get around the trash can. And so I know I'm kind of getting into the weeds of all the issues on Division, which everybody knows. But that was really the, those are the reasons that led to this concept that is much more pedestrian and bicycle-focused. The idea here with having sharrows in the center is this is a 25 mile an hour road, as it is when most of the time of the year, it's actually a school zone and it's down to 20. Having shared bicycles in the road for those that commute and prefer bicycles as their way of commuting in a 20, 25 mile an hour narrow zone like this is really comfortable and compliant with standards. The shared use path, why do we have both? It's because we, we don't want our, our kids going to school generally. I think I can speak for most of us in this regard. And we have some younger kids particularly in this area as well. The intent is not to put them in the street. That's really for the commuters. And so giving them an adequate area where they're feeling comfortable on that pathway was, was the idea. I'm going to jump to this before I take questions real quick. So at intersections, we do still need turn lanes, so center turn lanes and right turn lanes or left turn lanes, jeepers, I can't get my words right tonight. So for example, at Pine in Division, we would still have that turn pocket. It would still be a four-way stop. So this is basically showing that we would have a narrow section and then it widens up when it gets to an intersection, which is not uncommon. When it widens up at an intersection, what gives, if you will, where do we get that distance? Is in those buffer zones. So we have less snow storage when we get to an intersection and we're going to have to deal with that in the street, you know, the best that we can. But at least we're, we're maintaining the safety that we need at the intersections on both the west side and the east side and giving motorists the ability to, to move through the intersection as necessary.
Amanda, what are our current length widths there?
They vary anywhere from 16 to 18, I believe, feet wide. Yeah, and with, we do have dedicated bike lanes right now on Division. And that was something, and Chief, you can-
So are those included within that 16 or 18, or those are in addition?
In addition, yeah. I mean, Chief can speak to that as well. And we'll have a whole council presentation on the road safety audit. But I think, you know, we saw a lot of that where kids were riding the wrong direction in the street and they're just too close. Did you want to add anything then?
No, but I can concur with what she's saying. All those points that she's pointed out about bicyclist kids, even the bike lane that we currently have with kids riding them are extremely narrow, a lot of obstacles. So, you know, with the amount of hours and time that we put into it, I do believe this is the best plan that we have moving forward.
It looks great. It's going to dramatically slow traffic there.
It's going to be a major change on Division. I think, I think for the better, yeah.
I think it's, it's really important from a timing and sequence perspective. And our plan will articulate this, that this is, I don't want to say impossible because I try to avoid that word, but this is near impossible to implement without that Baldi connection project.
Yes, yeah.
Because this doesn't work for trucks.
No.
So I just, we kind of have to think of these two projects as connected, very interconnected.
Yes.
Does anyone online have a question? Yes.
Well, I had more of a statement. It's beautiful and long, long overdue. And it would be wonderful to get the kids away from the logging trucks. And yes, I understand that it may take another five or seven years, but I think it will be well worth the wait if we can make this happen. It will change the whole entire feel of town for the schools.
Thank you. I really appreciate that feedback.
And I, go ahead.
No, I was going to move on to the next, so please.
Well, before you do, because I lucked before you were finished with the alternative A. And does that include a bike component as well or some kind of multimodal sidewalk, anything?
It doesn't at this time. What, what I will say in-
And just let me add to that too, because there was also envisioned, as you know, a continuation of the Sandpoint Dover Trail along the west side of Highway Two continuing more.
Right.
I just want to know how that plays into this as well.
That's a really good question. And I am actually going to skip back to this one for a second. Our pedestrian network. And I say pedestrian, we, we have a separate one that kind of also reflects more of our bicycle routes as well. And so our preferred option, particularly on Baldi itself, is to get the bikes off of Baldi, to keep the pedestrians off of Baldi. And that's not just for this section, but that's for west of Boyer. Truly focus that as an industrial area. It's not to say we couldn't have a sidewalk. It's not to say a bicyclist couldn't ride in the road. It just wouldn't be designed as friendly as it would be in other areas. And so then the question is, well, where do we put them? And the answer to that was, as we work our way a little bit further south, we have some other east-west routes that get from Boyer to Division, specifically Spruce and Larch, that are better routes for bicyclists going east and west. And that would generally be our intent in getting bicyclists over to Boyer from, say, Fifth Avenue would be via Larch. And the reason for that, not to say this couldn't change and evolve throughout the preliminary design effort, at a high-level goal, we, well, let me back up. We understand this will be an expensive project, this Baldi connection. The way to keep that cost relatively reasonable and not let it get out of hand is to keep this roadway prism or roadway width as minimal as possible. Because the wider we make this particular section, the wider that Union Pacific Railroad Bridge gets. And that is an exponential cost factor. And so again, it's not to say we couldn't fit in a bike lane. It's not to say we couldn't fit in a sidewalk. But I think we are, as we work through preliminary designs and refine these concepts, we're going to have to balance, you know, do we need everything everywhere? Or could we spend our money in a different way that would allow us to just focus on motorists here and then focus on bicyclists somewhere else where it's more cost-effective? And I think that's, that's where we landed on this, being that, you know, Larch is such a close connectivity or connection, I should say, east and west at this location. Does that help?
Yeah, but, but the multimodal path north to south, the continuation of the Dover Sandpoint Community Trail, I would imagine, wouldn't necessarily be impacted by, or this could accommodate that because it would happen presumably on the east side of the tracks.
I don't think we have enough information at this time to say it could be accommodated or it couldn't. The challenge with that particular path that you're referring to is actually the BNSF structure that it would need to go under. Those foundations are relatively low. And so getting the necessary vertical clearance under that structure is where the, the challenge exists. So given that we have a pathway, a north-south pathway to the east, I'll go to the next drawing, to the east here along the byway itself, right, on the east side of the creek? And that we have a multi-use and bicycle-friendly path on Boyer, the idea of putting one in the middle, I think, although it's not impossible, I'm not sure it's risen to the top in our engagement efforts as, as necessary and or desired by the broader community. Not to say it's impossible. It's just not currently a project in this plan. So the community path would really connect to Larch and you would have the option- and you would have the option of going up Boyer at that location. You can certainly cross over and then obviously back down through Mountain View, across Popsicle Bridge, and then back onto the Sand Creek to kind of make that loop and get to Poncharang.
Okay.
I have a question from Councilman Darling. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Darling.
That's okay. One question, did the Dover Division extend south of Highway 2? Did I see?
It does not. That's a great point. Thank you. I didn't mention that. This basically would... The intent would be this goes from Spruce at a minimum down to Highway 2.
Okay, I thought I saw the orange line extend south down to North Shore.
Doesn't go to your house, buddy.
You're right. The orange path is... This is just a sidewalk network. So we're saying that if we're going to sidewalk, it needs to be... It needs to continue on.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. And to be clear, it's not to say that this cross-section couldn't continue north all the way to Baldi. It's just if our primary east-west connection for pedestrians and bicyclists is really that Spruce connection there at Farman Stedwell, we might need to phase the project and kind of focus it from Spruce south. What I will say on Baldi, when it comes to bicyclists, what's not lost on us and is included in here is we do need to provide access for bicyclists and pedestrians west of Division to get to Great Northern and to get to the west of the tracks over by the Disc Golf Course potentially. That's being contemplated as a potential project, so on our sidewalk network plan. But not having bicycles and pedestrians as a primary route for them east of Division.
So one comment, and, you know, not to get too much into the weeds here. I know we have some ground to cover yet, but, you know, it's been for years, and I think in Urban Area Transportation Plan envisioned that there would be a separated multimodal path on Baldi. In fact, it nearly got funded a few years ago, and then we changed directions. Maybe that was right before you got here, I think, actually.
I think we changed directions when I got here.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that... That basically that concept is abandoned with this proposed network.
That's correct, Mr. May.
So it's a significant shift from kind of where we were thinking several years ago.
Yes, and that's a really good question you ask. The challenges with that concept are twofold. One, there are significant costs in the power lines and right-of-way acquisition along that that would be required. The power lines on the north side of that road are extensive, and it was contemplated to be on the north side of the road, which is where all of the driveway access points for industrial users are. So the property owners and the industrial users and the trucks were not... Were respectfully never thrilled with that concept, and they made that clear. Putting the sidewalk on the south side, or a path, a multi-use path on the south side, might be an option. But again, that's associated with quite a bit of right-of-way acquisition, and you still are having users, although they may be separated, accessing it in an area where you have industrial motorists. And frankly, a fairly significant arterial. The sheer volume, I mean, trucks aside on that road, the sheer volume of vehicles is, you know, it's a minor arterial. I think it's near a major arterial in the near future, so that would be what I would agree with. Anything else on Baldi or Division? All right, okay. So rolling through these, and I know this is difficult to see likely on a screen like this, but again, when it gets released out through our various avenues, you'll be able to zoom in and kind of take a closer look. So this is a snapshot of US 2 from our western city limit to essentially Boyer. And the overall concept here is access management. So from a safety perspective for all users, whether it's motorists, and Chief can certainly speak to this as well, the data around where we have incidents, where we have near misses, obviously the highway just from a sheer volume perspective as well, the overall best practice is to limit access on and off of a highway. And what we mean by limit isn't that we're going to shut down all the access points. In fact, that's not it at all. It's that we need to be really strategic about where those access points are. And what we heard from the community is, in short, we have too many. This highway, before it had all this volume on it, all these access points on and off of this road functioned. But we have a lot of diagonal entrances. We have some intersections, as everyone knows, where there's, you know, five to six different lanes coming into the highway at a time, and it's kind of difficult to navigate. So the solutions that are in front of you this evening are to restrict and provide right-in, right-out intersections at these various locations and add a through fair and signal at Ella. So the reason that we have chosen Ella... Ella currently doesn't go through to the highway. They promised it was not a trick question. So it would be extending Ella. You are on it. I saw your eyes. It would be extending Ella through to alleviate some of the other restricted access points. The reason that we pick Ella is because it is... Traffic engineers, as Preston and Mandy could certainly get into the weeds of more as well, they're pretty... Well, there's specific standards, actually, and there's guidelines around the spacing of signals, right? We've all driven and realized when the signals are so close to each other, it just doesn't function, and quite frankly, it's frustrating. So we want to have as much space as possible. Ella is squarely in between Division and Boyer. And so it is the logical midpoint from a design standard perspective. It's a little bit shy. The guideline is about a quarter mile is what we like to see between signals. And so this is a little bit shy of that. So this would restrict access... Well, it would actually provide a new left-turn lanes on Ontario and US 2. It would maintain the existing signal at Division. It would provide for right-in and right-out only, meaning you cannot take a left at Olive. It extends Ella. Marion Avenue and Highway 2 would be a right-in, right-out. And Superior would be left-turn lanes at Florence and West Superior intersection. So that is cleaning that intersection up quite a bit. We have left Boyer for a very specific reason off of this map, and I'll get into that here in a second. But I want to go ahead and open it up for any questions, or if you'd like me to zoom in on anything, I'm happy to do so.
One thing I want to call attention to on this, it appears that this is a very low-cost solution to, you know, arguably maybe one of our greatest safety issues in the city, right? So as the council may be aware, we had a really kind of pie in the sky, beautiful Highway 2 corridor plan done, what, 2017?
17.
Is that recent? Okay, and that was something that would be beautiful, and I don't know if it really... I don't know if it would have improved the traffic flow as much as this might, but certainly it was beautiful, and it would have been, you know, substantial investment from ITD and, you know, probably required city participation and whatnot. But this... What I appreciate about this is we get a lot of the same, you know, safety and traffic flow improvements at virtually no cost, just really a signal and, you know, some paint and all of the day. So that's... I think this is a great solution.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will say ITD was really grateful to see us coming to the table with some of these solutions. It's certainly been a collaborative effort in that regard. And they are, you know, it is their jurisdictional, it's their right-of-way. They're at the table with us when it comes to funding projects like this, and they made that very clear, so.
Great.
Any questions?
So they'll pay for the light.
Might have to work on that one. We're negotiating payment terms. But yes, they... Generally, I will say they're not a fan of adding additional lights, but they understand that this is a given trait. It's challenging to restrict access on these locations and not give it a relief valve, if you will. Anybody online have any other thoughts with this?
And so one more question about that light, Ella. So is that... Did you say that's a through? Does that also allow traffic through on Highway 2 without, like, what you were suggesting on the Baldi extension? That that traffic light could allow northbound traffic? Okay, nothing like that. This would just be a standard, like, okay?
Yes. Okay, I will move on from there. We're getting to the really exciting one. So I find them all exciting, but nonetheless. We... This map is labeled downtown. It's a bit broader than just downtown, and I am grateful to talk about this, because I will say one of the... I'll say the two. The top two, Chief, correct me if you think I'm wrong here. The top two community complaints we get in transportation as of late is why don't we have a signal at Pine? Or why don't we have two-way traffic between Fourth and Fifth on Pine? We don't like the one-way. And Superior and First Avenue is a major problem, and we don't like cut-through traffic through South Sandpoint in our neighborhood. What we are excited to reflect is that it has taken us some time, primarily as a result of all the efforts that we described at the beginning of this presentation. But we have developed some solutions, and I am really excited to say that I think our consultants heard the public, and we spent a lot of time talking about why and what would work best. We're looking forward to hearing what the public thinks of these solutions, so I will go through them with you. The problem, based... If you take the feedback and then you look at, okay, what's the feedback really saying the problem is? And what's the solution? The problem is we don't have an east-west connection between 95 and Highway 2 on the south side of town. People don't want to go north to turn around and come back south, right? So if you live in Segal and you work at... In Dover, I'll just use that, Segal to Dover. How do you get to Dover from Segal? That's the east-west connection that I'm talking about that doesn't exist. And so people are trying to find the path of least resistance. Our downtown reverting from one-way to two-way, I think, has been successful in many regards. One aspect that's kind of maybe an unintended consequence of that is through-traffic doesn't want to go through downtown. That was part of the point, right? But that means it has to go somewhere. It's... Traffic's a bit like water at times. It will find the path of least resistance. And so how can we restrict people from accessing South Sandpoint as a cut-through, is what that's called in transportation, to get to Highway 2? And the answer is we can make it a lot better to be on First and Pine and then connect over to Highway 2. And so the idea here is to actually restrict access westbound at Superior and First. So you would be forced to go northbound coming from Segal. Head north on First, get to the intersection of Pine and First, and then, you know, through two-way traffic all the way on Pine to Highway 2. To enable that, from a data perspective, a couple of things have to happen. And this is called the short-term plan, because we are continuing to work through some of that finite data with ITD. We have a model, they have a model. We're working on making sure our models match so that everybody can sign off on the final solution here. So I will say we haven't... We haven't displayed this evening and don't intend to a long-term plan without making sure that data is solid. So with that, we will note... We do note that the traffic volumes and the growth that are projected in town provide that Pine and First will be failing in a relatively short amount of time. Highway 2 is already failing in many locations. Superior and First, just for a point of reference, gets about 100 vehicles in the morning peak hour cutting through that neighborhood. So that is a significant amount of vehicles. This isn't... I appreciate our traffic engineer, traffic engineers very much, and I'm sure Chief Kuhn will remember this meeting. It's, you know, we really wanted to dive into, is this a perception or is this really an issue? And it's an issue. It straight up is an issue. And the problem with that is these residential streets were not designed for cut-through, and it's not safe, and it's not good for the residents or our pedestrians and bicyclists that are trying to use that area. So that's the concept you see here, is providing an east-west connection, not allowing traffic to go through Superior, heading north and cutting over with a signal at Pine and Fifth. You can't have a two-way at Pine and Fifth without a signal, which is why this concept doesn't exist today, because there's a signal too close at Church. That's why we can't simply just implement this today. So I'm going to pause there before I dive into Bridge and First and see if there's any questions with that.
Yeah, I have a few questions, Amanda. So as far as West Superior, at First, how does that happen? If you're going westbound on Superior, does... If you're southbound on First, are you allowed a right turn onto West Superior?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just essentially kind of... You just can't make that left if you're heading west on Superior?
Correct.
Otherwise, there is no other restrictions there? And that can be accomplished just with signage?
It can. We anticipate the First and Superior will be a phased approach. We're going to try with the least expensive striping and signage to work through and see if we can get motorists to comply, educate, go through that enforcement effort, and then ramp it up, I would say, as conditions unfold. I will also say that the data suggests eventually the center section... I'm not showing you the long-term plan, but I will speak to it, will require a signal.
Okay.
So it's going to get to the point that the volume's so much that signage and striping will likely not work.
Okay, and the signal has been removed at First and Pine?
That location will also likely require a signal in the near future.
Okay.
So just for informational sake, we, as a city, actually don't own a single signal. And I know our council members likely know that, but our citizens don't. All the signals within city of Sandpoint limits are owned by ITD. So this is a significant change to our community, not only from a cost perspective, but from an operational perspective all around the board.
So with this, you know, and I assume, are you going to address Boyer and Highway 2 at another...
Yes, yes. Primarily because, and that's why I say we're working on the long-term concept. We had a great meeting with ITD and their engineers. Gosh, I think that was last week. But we got to get our models better together, and that will solidify and present, we'll be able to present a better concept for Highway 2 at this location and the Boyer intersection.
Okay. Councilor Rule?
Yeah, I had a question. So the Superior and First, I recall that there was potential for roundabouts, a roundabout there in some discussion. I understand why you wouldn't do that, because you'd want to cut the through-traffic out. But my concern is all the people that actually live in the South Sandpoint neighborhood, like those people on the other end of First Street going south towards the water, they would no longer actually be able to turn into their neighborhood to get directly to their homes. So has that been discussed at all, or...
It has. So if they were going southbound on First, they could continue straight. What they couldn't do is if they were coming in from Segal, they couldn't take a left to head south. Yes, they would need to use a different street, such as Second. They would need to go north and then come back down on Second. It's a trade-off situation, and a trade-off in the aspect of the greater benefit in this regard. And I think the south, our sense is that the South Sandpoint residents would prefer to have to go around a block than to continue to have motorists cut through their neighborhood.
Yes, we would.
So glad there's a South Sandpoint resident who speaks to that. So that's what we heard from our community steering team, is that, and there are South Sandpoint residents in that, on that team, and they had a... And they had a similar feeling that this was worth it. I will also say roundabouts are challenging from the, the real estate, if you will, that you need to accomplish one that will accommodate trucks and just even the boats and the RVs that we have, et cetera. Just takes a significant amount of right-of-way and would impact residents. And frankly, the, the signal at this location functions and is more cost-effective than a roundabout. Roundabouts, you know, they are a great solution. They, it's functioning very well in several locations in town. But when we start to get in these more urban areas, it, it becomes more challenging.
Councilor Darling?
Yeah, just an opinion because I, I do live in South Sandpoint as well on the Vision Street. And I would use Superior down to Ontario connection frequently. If that, that Pine Street was or improved to a thoroughfare, you wouldn't even have to necessarily restrict the traffic on to East Superior. I think that people, once they figured it out, they would naturally want to follow the collector. And just because it should be substantially faster and safer than cutting through the South Sandpoint neighborhood. So just an opinion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we, we are working on the phasing of this because it will take a bit of time to, to get the funds to get our signals in place and make this function in the way that you're, you're referring to it. I will say, as, as this being the number one community issue at times, it feels like from a transportation perspective, I do not anticipate there will be much tolerance for delaying a solution at Superior and First in the time that it's going to take us to get signals at these other locations. So our, our thought is, okay, right out of the gate, we got to get some signs and striping out there to try and fix this problem. And then work on the signals and making Pine and First truly that more collector. If in the future, to your point, people are, are finding their way, then maybe we could relieve some of that valve. If that makes sense?
Any other questions or comments on this component?
I promise we're almost, we're getting through them. Okay, so back to this one really quick. An, an issue that isn't actually brought up as much in community feedback as it is in the data, I would say, maybe Chief disagrees with that, is Bridge and First. So Bridge and First is failing, shocking. I know to everybody, from a data perspective, level of service, it's failing today. And, well, maybe not today on December 3rd. But particularly in our peak seasons, and our peak seasons seem to be getting a little bit longer, right? And one of the main reasons that this intersection fails today, and Mandy can speak more to this if I miss anything, is the volume of pedestrian traffic. And so we have counted it, we have that data, we will show it to you. Pedestrian traffic causes significant delay for motorists. That's okay in our downtown core, I think we've all agreed, for the most part. The problem is, obviously, it backs up all the way to City Beach at times, trying to get out of that intersection. And so we tasked our engineers, we said, "Clean, save." And our planners, "Do, do what you think is best to really solve the problem." They looked at a number of solutions, including a signal. And came back to us and said, "A signal's not going to fix it here. That's, that's not what you need." So their solution
Drumroll.
Huh?
Drumroll.
Drumroll. Is, in the short term, we will leave it like it is until our downtown project Phase Three can come to fruition. When Phase Three comes to fruition, we will construct the sidewalks in a manner similar to what you see in this short-term concept. I'll start on the, the southern end, if you will, kind of by Burger Dock and the Starbucks and the Realty office there. Right now, we have a sidewalk with, we have parking, we have a sidewalk. And then we have that kind of awkward parking lot in front of those businesses with about a two-foot-wide sidewalk in front of their buildings. So this concept that you see actually provides a much wider sidewalk, public sidewalk, in front of those businesses. And shifts that parking to be, to be street parking and no longer a private parking lot. A few spots are lost in doing that on the east side. But we have a significant number of spots gained on the west side from a parking perspective. So it is a net gain by nine stalls total.
Room?
Yep. With six on the east side. We can't reserve public parking spaces for private use, so that's not contemplated in this. But what it also provides is that we have a cycle track that gets bicyclists on First Avenue on the front side of the parallel cars or diagonal cars going towards City Beach with a wider sidewalk. The business, the advantage for the businesses is obviously having more visibility to their storefronts. It provides opportunity for outdoor cafes and more of that atmosphere that we have downtown. As well as safety for pedestrians. Further, right in the current configuration, the exit for that parking lot creates a hazard as well as congestion at the intersection, given its proximity to Bridge and First. It by no means meets any form of a design standard. And it's simply not safe, to put it in a few words. So this is the short-term concept in that regard where traffic from City Beach would still be restricted to only taking a right, heading northbound out of the beach, no left turns. We would reinforce that with having seasonal planters put to prevent them from actually being able to take a left turn. And then we would provide a southbound turnpocket. So if you're on First Avenue and you want to head to the beach coming southbound, there's a turnpocket to give a little bit of free space there. Our traffic engineers could go into a lot of detail as to the challenges of a signal and some of the other solutions. But this really proved out to be the best short-term solution. As you'll recall from our past conversation, when we were looking at the property exchange at Bridge and First, we showed an image similar to this. The idea for bicyclists and how do we get bikes and kids safely to the beach is to significantly improve the width of our sidewalks on Bridge Street. So currently, we already have an existing shared bike and ped bridge. So the idea of bicyclists and pedestrians sharing space already exists on Bridge Street. Extending that further to the west, to First Avenue, is contemplated in this. Where if you are a, an eight-year-old, little girl, trying to get to City Beach and you and your parents feel safer being on the sidewalk, then you can ride on the sidewalk at this location. And we would have adequate signage and delineation consistent with standards to ensure everybody recognized that this was a shared path. With that said, that would mean that you can't have cafes and you can't have planters and some of the other streetscapes that we have throughout the rest of downtown, right? So it really needs to be focused on a shared pathway. Because what doesn't work, as the rest of downtown feels on a daily basis, is when you open your storefront door, you don't want skateboarders up in by you or a bicyclist. And so that is not, the, the conditions on Bridge Street are not the same as they are throughout downtown. What we're essentially doing is extending an existing shared pathway further to the west. The minimum sidewalk width for that is 10 feet. These are generally actually closer to about 12 and in some locations 18 feet wide. So they would be significantly larger than they are today. We heard a lot from people that, you know, we need to make sure that we don't get hung up in taking, you know, our boat trailers and our RVs to the beach. And we, we don't want bulbouts at this location. There are no bulbouts shown. We actually have a dedicated right-turn lane, as exists today, to get to the beach with plenty of turn radius there. I'm going to jump to the long-term solution really quick.
Amanda? I think one thing that's important to note with this, obviously with the, the change there right on the southeast side of Bridge Street with that realignment of the street parking and that parking lot. One of the challenges with this concept was, could we get a building owner to agree and partner with this in achieving this, this concept? And we have had conversations with the building owner representative that manages the buildings along there who felt too that this realignment with that parking lot and the parking along the street seemed like a sensible way to approach this area and was generally agreeable to this change.
It's one owner?
Yes.
That, that whole, the whole section's one owner. Okay. That's, that's great to hear. And then Amanda, you also pointed out on there, Bridge Street itself, the bridge is, has a very low rating. And it's on our list of future improvements for replacement. And would, it would be possible, when, when that bridge is replaced, that the pedestrian sidewalk on the south side be widened as well? And so that would accommodate that, that cycle track or that multimodal traffic on the east side of First to continue across Bridge Street without having to cross the street?
Yes, very good point. Thank you. We did maintain wide drive lanes. We're not intending to shrink down. We understand the size of the vehicles that go to City Beach, the intent here, that those two drivelines are wider than a highway. Literally an interstate is a 12-foot driveline and this is providing 14 feet on both sides. So, you know, our ability to be able to, to see this solution forward really began when we started having conversations at Bridge and First and getting some additional right-of-way there that helped enable this. So the other aspect to it is, you know, we talked about the eight-year-old who wants to get to City Beach. And how do we have a safe route for them and the difference in the solution? That said, some people still prefer to be in the street. And so this is providing it, share us on Bridge Street for it. If you prefer to be in the street, be in the street. If you prefer to be on the sidewalk, be on the sidewalk. Because I don't want to put words in Chief's mouth and he certainly is far better at enforcement than I am. But I think it, sometimes we can be fighting an uphill battle when maybe there's a solution that kind of accomplishes both. And that was really the focus here. Anything, Mandy or Chief or Jennifer, anybody want to add to this that I missed something? Okay, I'm going to go to the long-term solution if there's another drumroll. So if this solution proves, as our engineers feel, that it will not function in the long term and we're able to get a signal at Pine and Fifth Avenue, and the data supports that, where Pine Street is truly a collector that is getting people east and west. The next concept is basically the complete opposite of what you just saw, except for the conversation about wider sidewalks and parking. In this solution, you would no longer be able to go north on First Avenue. It restricts access physically year-round from the section between Church and Bridge Street. So if you are going into City Beach or you're coming out of City Beach, you are forced to head down Pine Street. If you want to get to City Beach, you're forced to go to Pine Street and head north on First Avenue to get onto Bridge Street. Otherwise, this concept is the same. So the idea is when we do downtown Phase Three and we work on the sidewalks, that the sidewalks are designed in a manner, the curb lines and the, the widths and the parking are all designed in a manner that accommodates both of these concepts. So in the short term, we stick with this one as long as we can. Once the improvements in the signal are in place, hopefully at Pine and Fifth, and we get that east-west connection I think we all desire, then this is anticipated to be what's going to be necessary to handle the volume of vehicles going in and out and still maintain good pedestrian and bicycle safety. So the center area here, where my mouse is, is blocked off by planter barriers, if you will, and also could be actually a raised crossing area. So it's, it's no longer a crosswalk. It's, it's sort of a plaza free-for-all from a pedestrian crossing perspective. And, and has opportunities beyond that. So. Amanda? We'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Yeah, Amanda, can you hear me?
Barely, yep.
Me and my microphone today.
It's okay, I got you.
So is that better?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, so if somebody wanted to, let's say, come up and not go to the City Beach and just park real quick to get City Beach Organics, The Hound, or not The Hound, excuse me, the Burger Dock or Starbucks right there. They reverse out and how do they get, like, if they want to just keep going down First Avenue to go home? It seems pretty complicated to me.
Yeah, that's a great question. So I, I really appreciate it because we had a lot of discussions about this with our engineers. And
Okay.
They, they, well, and the answer, it may seem overly simple and I apologize for that because it took myself a while to kind of buy into this, if you will. And I, I think Chief, you, you struggled with it too, I will say. Really, the answer is we have a grid system in downtown. And that is the beauty, if you will, of a downtown grid system is that you have multiple ways, particularly when it's two-way traffic, to get throughout the downtown grid system. And so if you are in Dover, or I'm sorry, if you're in Sagal and you wanted to go to The Hound or The Panda, you're right, you have to go on Pine. And then you have multiple ways as to which you could continue north and get to those other destinations. To that end of your heading south and you need to get out of town.
Not to interrupt you. I think his question more was, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, if I back out of the space on a First, I have to go into the beach to turn around to come back out?
Can you just pick up a little louder, please?
I think your question, I think either I, I misheard your question or maybe Amanda did. So just clarifying, you talked about when you backed out of Starbucks and you went north, you'd have to go into the beach to come back out? Or are you looking through that connectivity?
Yes, so let's say like, so my family, you know, we're coming in from church, we cross the Long Bridge. We park right in, right on the right side, right before we enter the, the beach, we park right there. I cross the street, I get City Beach Organics, I called it in, right? So I cross the street on this, to the Starbucks side to get back in my car, I want to go home. Can I just do a U-turn there and then go down Pine Street? Or do I have to go into the beach, do a loop and then come back out?
Thank you, Chief, for recognizing I wasn't answering the right question. I sincerely apologize. I thought you were talking about coming across the Long Bridge and how do you get to The Hound? So you, you are spot-on. That is a downfall to this concept is that the parking, getting out of the parking stalls is a challenge. Further to your point, parking on the west side of the stalls, you have to have a turnaround, basically, to be able to get into them. We have had conversations. Mandy, do you want to kind of touch on our last discussion for that? I think you're good at explaining it.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, that we need to study how this particular segment of the street would function. Would it become more of a parking area? And could we look at, you know, maybe even a 90-degree pull-in for parking rather than angled parking? What we're showing right now is an early planning concept, but it really needs to be flushed out in design and engineering. And there, there could be the potential to create that U-turn idea or turnaround area there and make that work. So it's just, it needs to be studied in, in more detail. And, you know, then, I, I mean, I think we did talk about the fact that, you know, we'd like to avoid having to have the people that are parking in this particular area go all the way down to the beach and turn around. So. So we recognize it's really a challenge and, and it just needs to be looked at in more detail at the engineering level.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just giving my two cents, you know, we eat at those places a lot. So when we're coming into town, we call it in. We park right in front of Starbucks, right in that area. And it doesn't, it looked like, I don't know, I'd have to go through the City Beach to turn around to go back home.
Yeah.
You know, if we lived in a perfect society, this would be great. A lot of people still drive and I think, I don't think we'd be having this big of an issue if people just drove the right way.
So, Mandy, I have a question about that. So, because, you know, what, what you show here is a 17 and 18-foot-wide lane, which is, you know, pretty huge. And then
Yeah.
I can't tell what the width- And then I can't tell what the width of that sidewalk is on the east side, but it looks, it looks like a lot, like 15 feet or something. So it seems like there, there may be, you know, enough space there. If those were, you know, contracted back to 12 feet for, you know, let's say that you could maybe do that perpendicular parking that you suggested. And I I know that's probably a challenge from the, you know, it's creates its own perhaps safety challenge. But, you know, I can imagine that that you're going to have a lot of naturally slow traffic there anyway. What do you think about that? Is there enough space?
Yeah, I think, you know, what what we're kind of struggling with is a normal downtown street with two-way traffic. It's it's illegal to back out into the other lane and go in the other direction. But if this were operating more as a a parking area that has through traffic on on either end, then, you know, that restriction could go away. So I think we just need to look at it and like you say, the speed of traffic and that kind of thing and and how that would operate. I think the other thing you could study is whether or not there's enough room just before the raised crossing area to do kind of a little traffic island, a traffic circle. I wouldn't call it a roundabout at all, but just enough of a circle that people could safely make a U-turn and turn around. So it it's definitely a conundrum, we're struggling with with how how to address it. But I think with engineering time and and studying more options, I think it could could get resolved. I also just want to point out though that there are some urban design and kind of gateway community identity benefits to both of these short-term and long-term options, you know, that that also would benefit from further design and looking at, you know, for example, how the planters would be designed and could you have, you know, outdoor sidewalks space or shared public spaces in these areas? And that is one of the reasons why that sidewalk adjacent to the Starbucks building is amply wide, just to really, that could be really a great sidewalk café area and you would still have space that people could stroll along freely beside that area. So, so I think, you know, there's definitely benefits and this could become kind of a milling place, you know, but in a safer, less congested manner than it is today.
Well, and I I appreciate that, Mandy, I do just want to emphasize that this is sort of the the far farther-out concept, in, I mean that word in multiple ways. As where this concept, we are, we remain hopeful that making some of these improvements and some of the improvements on Pine and other locations is going to enable us to implement this first, continue to evaluate it and then reassess a concept like this and get more into the weeds of that, right? Number one, is it still necessary will be the first question asked. And number two, okay, what does it really look and mean for all users in that application? It seemed disingenuous to not show that this concept exists because it is very possible that this will continue to fail and we will get to a point in time where we got to do something drastic at this intersection. What that something is, is going to take a much deeper dive and we're going to learn more over the coming years as we implement some of these other solutions that we've talked about tonight. So I wouldn't worry too much that this is going to happen tomorrow. We'll, we'll continue to work on it and I think, yeah.
And Amanda, you know, if you go back to the the short-term concept right there, I mean, you know, in terms of traffic flow and functionality, there's really no different difference between that and what we have today other than, you know, the parking and the multimodal space on the south, south end, right? So in terms of traffic flow, that's what we have today. It's just you're 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 absolutely restricting that left-hand turnoff of Bridge Street where right now people can cheat and do that. So so that's basically where we're at today. And we still have the same problems with pedestrian multimodal congestion, you know, induced congestion. So Chief, is there, did you want to add something to the long-term concept? I I'm curious what your perspective on that is.
I'll come on the the short-term one, one thing to just clarify on the short-term one because that's an easier topic is to, so if you've looked at the striping over the last two or three years, we've done some different stripings. We have that quasi-roundabout, no-yield thing that we we did for a while. And then we moved on to some some better signage. And and last year, we had it striped different than it's striped this year. So if you've noticed, we're putting the two stripe packages now together. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, under this current package. So if you notice, last year, we had painted that that southbound turn lane going into the beach. That turn pocket was painted, was really effective last year, allowing cars to stack and pull. This year, that one didn't get striped, we focused on that right turn going into the beach to see what the the effects of that was, that free turn and how it cleared up traffic. So this next year, we paint, you're going to actually see that work together and we'll be able to evaluate as a whole unit now how that will impact traffic flow in and out of the beach and then on the law enforcement side, really enforce that that right turn only coming out of the beach. And we've debated a lot in these meetings, do we put a timeframe on it? Is it all the time, part-time, summertime? And as of right now, it's strictly still just a right-hand turn unless we decide something different. So I'll be curious this year with some of the other designs lower on with our parking to see how that affects that traffic flow. The long-term parking, to be honest, when I first, or that long-term design, when I first saw it, I think I had, I think my gut reaction was no way the citizens are going to hang us. And then I I chewed on it for probably a month, I think, honestly, before I went back to Amanda and said, you know, this is a lot of the, you've heard a lot of ifs tonight, the Baldi project. If we can complete the underpass, then we can fix Division. If we can do this, then we can do this. This would only potentially work if we get that Pine Street two-way connectivity to work. Outside of that, this wouldn't work at all. Some of the things that we constantly hear from our businesses is they wanted that ability to shut down First Avenue and to have activities and parties and and whatever. By blocking First Avenue off, this actually sets up some of those, potentially for some of those businesses to do some of those activities. So there, even though at first glance, there's still things that have to be fixed from the traffic flow, like what the council was talking about, right, how do you hammerhead, how do you turn around? How do you fix some of those issues? But looking to like, how would this benefit like the downtown core? Is really after my month of chewing on the traffic flow is where I went. And I could, I could see some positives in it with some issues that we still got to work out. So I talked in a circle, but.
But back to the question I had for Mandy, go, I'm curious your perspective on, could could that section, that south section of First be treated as essentially a parking area that that where you can pass through to Bridge Street? So if 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 the width is there to do perpendicular parking and, you know, as we know, it's illegal to back into, you know, the the opposite, you know, lane of traffic. But that's different if it's, say, a parking area, right, or a parking lot. So I I'm just curious, from your perspective, i- is that something that you think could be feasible? Because I think if if the perpendicular parking could happen, that that might resolve that, that very issue.
Yeah, I'd have to agree, I'd have to agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I think that would help a lot.
Yeah. I think, I think it could be one of the solutions, definitely, that we would study. And there might be some MUTCD signage or elements that would need to go along with that, you know, to let people know they're entering a parking limited access area or something like that. But, you know, I think one one place I know of where they've done that is in Seattle, kind of along the waterfront. They have several areas that used to be through streets, but now they're kind of series of parking areas. So it's definitely a special area that deserves special thought and policy, for sure. Like, I I don't know if you mentioned this, Amanda, but another thing we were talking about is just the rule about bikes on sidewalks and maybe maybe some streets in this, in this area that would be changed for, you know, for people under age 15 or 12 or something like that. You know, because it's just such a a different area that people are using differently. Anyway, sorry to bring that up, that was probably a landmine, but anyway.
That was great, thank you.
Now, the concern, Amanda constantly reminds me of that words matter. So if we call it a parking lot, it changes some of the enforcement actions. As we, as we move forward with with it, really defining what that space is and and creating in that long-term plan, I think is critical. But I think those are, there's options that we've talked about where you can potentially create those U-turns or those, there's turn turn movements for the average car. My dad pulled in there with his, you know, fifth wheel coming back from Arizona for the winter. He wouldn't make that turn, he would have to go to the beach. But I think the average car would potentially could make that turn. So which would, I think, fulfill some of those questions about how do we get them in and out of there more effectively?
All right.
Any other questions on that one or comments, anyone? Thanks, Amanda.
You're welcome.
I'll make a comment. It will be a sad day if we ever shut any portion of the First Avenue corridor down. The most iconic sites as you pull into our town, it identifies the the quaintness of our our little community and downtown corridor. And I just really advise against any kind of section segmenting the main flow of traffic down our First Avenue corridor. Thanks.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay. I am, Mandy, do you want to take it from here?
I'm, yeah, I'm happy to. So where do we go from here? We have some work to do to further present the concepts that we're showing you today and get input on those with the community. And so what we have planned is a two-pronged approach to engagement in the coming weeks. So given the need for social distancing and, you know, having safe engagement, the first part of our approach would be workshop sessions online via Zoom, like we're doing now. And we would be covering multiple modules in various different sessions. And we would notify the public of these and, you know, for example, if someone's just really interested in First Superior and downtown but not these other areas of the plan, they could attend the First Superior and downtown session. Then we we might have, we will have another one on Baldi Extension and, you know, maybe we tie in the trucking routes with that one. One on Division, another one on the Highway Two corridor, something on the pedestrian priority network. So these are the modules that we're planning for at this time because we think these are, these are the aspects that people are most interested in. So we want to get some input on those in the coming weeks before we we really compile the full draft plan and take it through the formal review process. And in addition to the online workshop sessions, we will also have the opportunity for people to log on to an online survey that will have all of these modules. So we'll have presentation materials and some narrative and key questions. And then people would be invited to comment online related to these areas. So I'll stop right there because we would like to see if you have any comments or suggestions about the engagement that's presented here, the approach.
Actually, Mandy, I've got a couple of additional things. One of the benefits with doing our workshops online is it gives us the ability to record those too. So where typically we're having a workshop and if someone isn't able to be there at the time that we're doing the workshop, they kind of miss the whole discussion. So the plan would be that we would record these workshops and they would be available on our YouTube and we'll get links on our website and and on our Facebook page as well. The online survey, we refer to it as an online survey blog because the format of it would be more in the form of a blog as opposed to some of our traditional surveys where we're just asking you kind of canned questions and you're answering that. You'll recall that what we did with our parks designs and kept it open for some time was we had our parks designs that were out there and people were able to provide comment on those. The public can see them, somebody else could provide further comment or questions. And it actually pings us at the staff level as well as the consultants so that it allows actually for an engagement back and forth, not quite the same as a live workshop, but, you know, over a period of 24 hours, the ability to communicate back and forth and people can sign up to get notifications when there's posts and things on that as well. In addition to this, similar to what we did with the parks, it's been pretty successful for us having the easels up in our lobby area in City Hall and people coming in to pay their utility bills. We see them, while we're looking at those people who don't have online access or that's not a preferred method for them, they're not comfortable with it. They're able to come in and actually just look at them in the lobby. And it's not like we have a large crowd at a time, it's just kind of in and out. It gives us the opportunity to, as we're going back and forth as staff, if we see somebody stopping and and kind of looking at a concept generally, we try to stop if we have time and engage in a conversation. So it it gives us a way to dialogue with the public multiple ways. And we've got to be more and more creative in the times that we're in and how how we do that. So this is initially the plan and then we keep kind of reassessing how we're doing community engagement and what's working under current conditions.
Mandy, a couple of questions. One, so I imagine with the, say, the pedestrian priority network module, that you're going to be able to zoom down and look at, you know, specific sections of of the network. You know, we weren't able to really look at it tonight because it's just too too small on the screen, right? But you're going to be able to drill down and and, you know, talk to details throughout the network?
Yeah, we will, we will work with the city on, you know, the methods for displaying information. I think one of the best ways to digest a map like that is to let people download it as a PDF and then they can zoom in and review it that way. So we'll, we'll work through that and and decide what the best way is for people to be able to zoom in and out so they can read the information.
And then, you know, what is the the time scale that we're looking at having these multiple modules completed? Because, you know, one concern that I would have is that we try and condense these all into a week. But, you know, we have, you know, community members that want to engage in all the different modules, but they can't make time, you know, five days a week to to spend a couple of hours on this each night. So are, how how far apart are these going to be space to accommodate that that kind of engagement?
Yeah, I don't know, Amanda, if you and Jennifer have discussed that, but I know we've talked about several weeks, not just trying to condense it all into one week.
Okay, one or two a week, maybe something?
Yeah, predictable on days and times. So that somebody can kind of know, maybe it's Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
And then similarly with the online survey, that that, would that just coincide with the modules and then extend for maybe several weeks after or?
The online survey, likely, we just leave it open until we're coming back to council. I mean, we can, you know, we can get a bulk of feedback at a period of time, but feedback continuing to come in. Honestly, we can deal that with that going all the way into the council meetings and that's similar to what we did with parks.
That's great, okay. And and, you know, my only concern there and and, you know, I've talked about that with staff is just, you know, obviously, sometimes with these surveys and, you know, we have time constraints that we're trying to meet. So we have a short window to complete the survey or to have it open for the public. And we want to make sure that when we can, as much as possible, we we have that open for the, as long a period as possible to encourage more participation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this point? Or comments? Okay, were you still going, Mandy?
We have one more slide, then we're done. Thank you for bearing with us. We just, so I think to your point, Mayor, this is a little bit of a look at our timeline. We just, so I think to your point, Mayor, this is a little bit of a look at our timeline, helpful. So we'd like to complete the engagement modules, the online workshops, you know, this month in December. That's our plan. They could extend into early January as well. So we're still nailing down those timeframes. The survey, as Jennifer just mentioned, could, you know, be posted simultaneously at the meetings, but then held open until we come back to council with the draft multimodal plan. And so we'll be working with city staff to review the draft plan in January and go through the project prioritization that I mentioned earlier. And then our plan is to bring the full draft plan then back to council, starting in February, with final adoption by March. So that's the timeline. We're getting close to the finish line here, which is exciting. So happy to answer any further questions about that.
Thank you, Mandy. Any questions from council? All right. Thank you for that presentation, Mandy. That was great. Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue?
There's no one from the public online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Once again, we appreciate that update. Very thorough.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation. On the next two items on our new business this evening pertaining to the city's Sign Code and Building Regulations. And our building official, Christine Coleman, will give us a presentation. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council for considering this proposal to update our Title VIII of our code tonight. We have two goals with this proposal. One is to overhaul the entire title of our code since several of the chapters have become outdated or obsolete. Two is to adopt the 2018 Building Code Series, which the state adopted earlier this year. The state requires that we be on the same edition of the building code as the most recently adopted state code. So that's why we are proposing an update to the 2018 series. I'm going to begin by talking about the building code regulations. And I want to consider both ordinances at the same time after the presentation. So to start with, our updated title will have just four chapters instead of nine or 10. One of the reasons for that is over the past several years, the building codes have evolved to include a lot of things that previously had to be adopted separately. For example, regulations for swimming pool safety, tiny homes, some fire separations, what to do with unsafe buildings, all of those are now included in the 2018 Building Code Editions. So we don't need to adopt them as separate chapters under the title anymore. The Sign Code, Chapter Five, we're not getting rid of. We are just proposing moving it over to Title IX to be under zoning where it's more appropriate. What I'd like to talk about tonight is just a brief overview of a few of the...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt just for a second? Because that brought up a question for me. Would you still be the enforcement arm for Sign Code? Or would that be switched to planning? Or how would that work?
Oh, that's a good question because right, that's why we're moving it. Because right now, the Sign Code that's in Title VIII, the building code doesn't really have any, the building code isn't a tool to enforce that. It's more about locations of signs, areas, where they can be and how. The building code does regulate signs, but only for structural safety and electrical safety. And that's still in the building code. The part that goes along with the zoning code is going to, there's already a part, a chapter in the zoning code that addresses signs. So it makes sense to just put it all together. It's more appropriate.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. So but if there was a violation, it would just be, would the method of enforcement be essentially the same that it is today? It would just, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's typically our crows that are dealing with that. Again, there might be coordinating with planning and zoning around what's allowed or what's not. But our kind of face of the enforcement front is the community resource officers.
Okay, thanks.
So I'd like to share just a brief overview of the new 2018 Building Code Editions that were adopted and amended by the state. I'd also like to clarify the relationship between the billing codes and the ADA Titles Two and Three. And after that, I'd be happy to take any questions about the title update or the new codes. So the 2018 building codes, all of the codes adopted by the state are the 2018 additions. This is going to be a really welcome change to our designers and builders who for the last several years have had to deal with different code additions from different years, which there's lots of conflicts that happen when you deal with codes from different cycles. So that's a huge improvement. The IBC is really the backbone of our code additions. There were a few updates to the IBC that will have a direct effect on our community. They're mostly good changes. To begin with, the occupant load factor for businesses changed to 150. The reason that's significant is that when the occupant load of a building reaches 50, it kicks in requirements for a lot of things like second exits, emergency lighting, different signage. There's a lot more restrictions in this case. For example, like a 5,000 square foot building right now has an occupant load of 50. And all those requirements kick in. With the new occupant load factor of 150, that same building, same size, would have an occupant load of 36. And it would, those requirements would not be kicked in. So that's been relaxed a little bit. That'll be good news to all of our business owners. The accessory storage change is also going to have a, make things a lot easier for our local designers and builders. In the past, any storage space that exceeded 100 square feet had to be considered separately, which means fire separations, or maybe it wouldn't be allowed. Now accessory storage space can be any size and still be considered part of the primary occupancy. Drinking fountains, I don't know how many people this will affect, but it's a really cool change. If there's a public drinking fountain within 500 feet, then the business owners are not required to install a drinking fountain in their tenant space. So I know some people that will affect. And probably one of the most important changes that's been coming for a long time and is necessary is decks and balconies. The live load for decks and balconies, we're changing how we calculate that now. For a long, long time, the live load for a deck has been 40 pounds. In an area like this where we have a snow load of 55 pounds, obviously, we end up with some underdesigned decks. All over the country, this has been a growing problem. This picture is of a patio in Nampa that also served as a carport covered. Fortunately, there were no serious injuries or loss of human life. Can't say the same for the cars. But deck failures are a major problem. In the last five years, there have been more than 6,000 cases of major injuries or loss of life due to deck and balcony failures. So the the new code addresses that by calculating the live load at one and a half times the live load of the area served, which will make it a lot, for example, the live load for assembly space, like what happened at this lodge, the live load is 100 pounds. So the design load would have been 150 pounds instead of 40. So that's a big change, but very necessary. And it speaks to how the codes evolve. Usually, events that cause loss of life cause the code committees to really take a hard look at what the code requirements are. Moving on to the residential code. The residential code, most of the changes are directly related to the need to find creative solutions to provide more affordable housing. In Idaho, there aren't a lot of changes that we will see because now tiny houses are incorporated into the code. A lot of options for how townhouses are built became part of the code. But in the past, in Idaho, we have amended the code to reflect these same things. There was a tiny house amendment. There was a townhouse construction amendment. So no change really, except for that now they're in the codes. And that will make it a lot easier for people in the design community to put together plans and to build them. One big change that'll help a lot of our short-term rental people is that there's now an exception for basement sleeping rooms. If there's an egress in the basement, then the basement bedroom doesn't have to have its own egress. That's a change I think will affect quite a few people in town. Another change that's more of a fire and life safety change is that in the past, if a house, a residence was remodeled or changed or had an addition, the required smoke detectors could be the battery stick-to-the-ceiling kind. And going forward, they'll all have to be interconnected. So that's a change some people won't like. The energy conservation code, the changes weren't extreme. They're mostly clarifications. For residential construction, the one change we'll see is that insulation is required under heated slabs. It used to be required only around the edges. But as I've been out in the field doing inspections, almost every contractor that I've done an inspection for is already doing this because it makes sense to put insulation under the whole heated slab. So I think we're already doing it here, probably because of our climate zone. The other changes affect commercial occupancies. And they're more or less just clarifications. There was wording in the previous code cycle that occupancy sensors, so that in the lights are turned, the lights off when there's no occupants in the space, they were required. The code said where lights are typically left on. And that was pretty unclear because it's hard to define typically per building. So now it says in any zone less than 600 square feet, ten offices and break rooms, just a clarification.
She looks like the grown reading addict there.
Hotels with more than 50 guest rooms, so we have one of those coming up. We'll have to have automatic controls for heat and cooling that are activated when the room is vacant for more than 30 minutes. And that's a new requirement. So moving on to my favorite topic is the building code and the ADA. The ADA has five titles. Only one of those titles is regulated and enforced through the building code, and that's Title III. Title III regulates public accommodations. So public accommodations are businesses that are generally open to the public, such as restaurants, stores, movie theaters, daycares, business offices, most commercial occupancies. So the building code is the tool that is used to regulate public accommodations. The ADA says that facilities that are required to comply with the ADA standards are also required to comply with accessibility requirements established under state and local laws. Since Idaho adopts the building code, that is the tool that we use to enforce accessibility requirements for public accommodations. That enforcement is through us, through plan reviews, building inspections, local enforcement. The tools that we use for that enforcement are the building code, existing building code, the anti-standard. And does that mean that public accommodations aren't accountable to also comply with the ADA? No, they are accountable to comply with both. And for a long time, that's been really complicated and confusing. With every code cycle, the two sets of standards get much, much, much closer. So at this point, the differences are very few between the building code and the ADA standard. The code review committees have worked really hard to get those two things in line. So what does that mean for us as a city? Title II of the ADA applies to us, to state and local governments. Title II is not enforced or regulated through the building code. Title II is a different set of requirements. It requires that we do a self-evaluation, that we make reasonable modifications to policies, practices and procedures, that we identify barriers and that we effectively communicate with people with hearing, vision and speech disabilities. Title II applies to us. Any public entity with more than 50 employees has the obligation to provide all public services compliant with the ADA. The enforcement is through the federal agencies, Department of Justice and civil lawsuits. So Title II is not enforced by us locally. We are obligated to comply. It's enforced through complaints, lawsuits and federal agencies that fund programs and services that we provide. The compliance path for Title II is the 2010 ADA Standard for Accessible Design and FHA Fair Housing Design Guidelines. That's a quick overview of the new code additions that we're proposing to adopt. I'm happy to take questions.
Council, any questions? Christine, you definitely upped the graphics bar here for this crowd. Your colleagues are jealous, I'm sure.
So it happens when you give us a feed holiday.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate that. No questions from council, I see? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? No, there's none. Okay, I will now read the ordinance as follows. The first ordinance, an ordinance of... The first ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Sandpoint Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, recodifying Sandpoint City Code Title VIII, Chapter Five, Sign Code, under Chapter Six of Title IX, zoning, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication and an effective date. I will entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, this will be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Darling? Councilman Darling?
Yes, okay.
Councilwoman Sherman? Says yes. Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes, or I'm sorry, the ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules were required in three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended. And that the ordinance passed its second, third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman? Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
All right, motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. I will now read the title of the second ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending city code Title VIII Building Regulations, repealing and replacing Chapters One, Two, Three, Six, Seven and Nine, renumbering Chapters Four and Ten and referencing the recodification of Chapter Five, Sign Code, under a separate ordinance, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication and effective date. I will entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules were required in three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended. And that the ordinance passed its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. All right, the final item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. I would entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-2061B to consider the evaluation, dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now convene an executive session. I want to thank those members of the public who participated this evening on Zoom. The Zoom meeting will now end. Have a good evening.
Councilman Darling?
Yeah, I texted.
She should be in the waiting room.
Can we sign on now on that other link?
You should have that. Can we send it if you need it? I'll send it to all of you.
Okay.